Oh, sorry.
All right.
Oh, all right.
Wake up, everyone. Sorry about that. Um, it is seven o'clock on Tuesday, the thirteenth, twenty twenty five, and I will call the regular council meeting of the township of Nettigan to order for today. We will start with our land acknowledgement in the spirit of reconciliation. The corporation of the township of Nettigan respectfully acknowledges it is located upon the traditional lands of the Red Rock Indian Van, signatory to the Robinson Superior Treaty, that's better, Lars, thank you, at Superior Treaty, eighteen fifty, and the township further respectfully acknowledges the historic presence of other signatories on these lands. Okay, item one, any addendums to the agenda?
There should be one for. Oh, there should be a request to add the chief building official agreement after closed session.
Okay. After a close session. Right, that is noted. Um, are there any disclosures of the community interest this evening? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to number three, approval of previous council minutes. Uh, first we have the April minutes, regular meeting minutes from April twenty ninth, twenty twenty five. And we also have, is it the same resolution?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, and then we also have, um, the town hall meeting notes from May fifth, twenty twenty five. All right, do, uh, is there anyone, anyone have any comments or questions about those? Okay, who will move the resolution to approve those minutes? Counselor Harper? Second invited Counselor Westgaver? This is resolution twenty twenty five dash one one six, moved by Counselor Harper, seconded by Counselor Westgaver. Be it resolved that this council approves regular meeting minutes from April twenty ninth, twenty twenty five, and the meeting notes from the May sixth, twenty twenty five town hall meeting as presented. All in favor? Opposed and carried. Okay, moving on, Public Works. So we have our Public Works report twenty twenty five dash zero five dash one three dash zero one, and I believe that we have Taylor Haskell, our Public Works superintendent, on the owl to, um, present that report to us.
Awesome, thank you Suzanne. Um, so, kind of in standard order, I'll go through the items and then I'll provide my recommendation at the end. Um, so the first item is, uh, the equipment purchase, purchase of a bulldozer in the amount of one hundred and twenty-five thousand. In twenty twenty four, the township spent in the ballpark of thirty thousand in costs related to bulldozer rentals, considering how frequently we require the use of a bulldozer to meet environmental regulations. Purchasing our own can prove to be a long-term cost-effective solution to the increasing price of rental costs as it avoids the overhead costs and profit margins contractors charge us. Um, the bulldozer would always be available when needed, not only for landfill operations but other projects as required, allowing our crew to respond to unexpected needs without delay. This would also allow us to train staff on this piece of equipment, um, who will then become more familiar with the site, only increasing efficiency over time. This piece of equipment would be a capital asset which will retain some value that could be captured during a resale. Um, the second item is discussing the water main break, um, just an update here. So in follow-up to the water main break that occurred on April twenty fourth, twenty twenty five outside of one hundred New- Newton Street, sample results were received and found to be in compliance. The test, test results were provided to both the Thunder Bay District Health Unit and the Ministry of Environment Conservation and Parks, and we were advised by the district health unit that the boil wide water advisory could be lifted. Um, letters to the affected residents were distributed on April thirtieth, twenty twenty five, and subsequent documentation has been submitted to the Spills Action Center, District Health Unit, and the MECP as required. Um, the third item is about our systems audit, so that was our audit for the, uh, drinking water quality management system. So that was completed by SAI Global, um, on Friday, May the ninth, twenty twenty five. So that entailed a review of our operational plan and standard operating procedures. Only two opportunities for improvement were identified, which is an improvement from the audit completed in twenty twenty four, which identified three non-conformities and four opportunities for improvement. And then, um, so just my recommendation, um, that council approves the purchase of a bulldozer up to the amount of one hundred and twenty-five thousand. Anyone has?
Thank you very much for that, Taylor. Does anyone have any questions? Counselor Hurd?
The water main break, was there a specific cause for it? Like, was it just a degradation of the infrastructure involved?
Yeah, that, it was just a degradation of the infrastructure involved, um, and kind of in that one happening, we've kind of been able to identify that, uh, Newton Street, um, has, most of our breaks have been down there, um, in the last couple of years. So, um, it has been identified that that's definitely an area of concern for us and something we should look at, um, as we're planning going forward.
There was the other day, I, where my hostess on Newton, on, on second street, I hope, borders Newton, there was a discoloration in the water for probably about seven or eight hours. I'm just bringing that up.
What date was that, Glenn?
Been, I believe, two days ago.
Oh, two weeks ago.
No, two days, just recently, like yesterday or the day before, I can't remember exactly.
Okay, that was likely from, uh, we just turned on the water down at the marina this week, which did create some discoloration for some of the residents down there, um, who we, we advised to all the individuals who called in.
Yeah, I, I don't really worry about it in town. There were good twelve hours to see if something works its way out, so.
Okay, does anyone else have any mentions for Taylor? Um, yeah, just, um, as for my comments here, it's, um, congratulations to our water staff on having just a few opportunities for improvement as opposed to the three non-conformities and four opportunities for improvement last year. So that's really good news, so good work, um, on our part. Um, yeah, and I just kind of echo Glenn's concern there about having those water grates or water main grates on the same area. That may be something to look at for, um, next summer for redoing any water stuff and paving at the same time and taking care of those, uh, issues in that area. Okay, seeing no other questions, uh, we have a resolution here to approve, um, Taylor's recommendation. So, uh, do you have a mover for that? Yeah. Okay, Counselor Hurd, right, Senator? Counselor Hurd? Resolution twenty twenty five dash one one seven, moved by Counselor Hurd, right, seconded by Counselor Hurd. Be it resolved that this council receives staff report twenty twenty five dash zero five dash thirteen dash zero one for information and authorized staff to procure and purchase a used and operable bulldozer up to one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars by HSP. All in favor? Opposed and carried. Thank you, Taylor.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, next up, we have the CAO staff report, twenty twenty five dash zero five dash thirteen dash zero two. Is there anything, um, that you want to go to on this? It's a, it's a bit of a lengthy report there, so I don't know if there's anything you want to present to us or point out.
I guess it's okay, we'll, um, I'll go through the first one.
Yeah.
Exactly. Um, so, uh, just a few recommendations more for housekeeping on the, uh, the fees and charges by law. There was a number of items that were added in administration. Uh, one of the items that we get often is the request for roads, like confirmation from a legal perspective when they're purchasing property. So that was added in there as far as fees and then, uh, a changeover in the fees for a tax certificate. So if there's a property coming in without a roll number, then just, but there's a cost for that because there's a bit of extra time associated with that. Um, we, a lot more of how the staff are working is we're referencing by property rules. Um, so that's where we're kind of trying to force that, so then it just makes our record keeping a bit more, um, aligned with what we're trying to do internally. Uh, overall, though, the, the recommended changes are mostly, we're, we're, we weren't looking to touch the campground, or sorry, the marina fees because the, the ad hoc committee advised not to do that this year. So this was more of just the camping fees to increase slightly, just to be more competitive and aligned with what's being offered in the area. Um, the power fees were, were quite low, um, so that was a recommendation to move that up over time because the overall, the season, it was, it was, um, there's challenge that might not have been cost recovery or, or near that. So to kind of get where we're recovering our costs for sure.
So that's going up every year, or?
If you stay for, yeah, so that, we have a, we're going to look at it every year as far as upgrading the fees, but this will bring it up, um, for the whole season as for this year.
Because I think it was a hundred and seventy-five bucks, uh, for a season, and that's, that's actually dirt cheap.
And then, uh, there was the addition, uh, so I worked with, uh, Public Works Super Haskell on getting some fees set aside for the, um, Public Works Department. So if we're ever having to do by law enforcement compliance or having to go in for properties, this is more for that purpose, or if there's someone that damages the road and we have to go reclaim those costs, this is why we have those fees. It's not to say that we're going to be open and doing business on private property, um, or taking away from private businesses, it's more just so if we have to go do something.
There's, there's a fee structure there, right?
Yeah. And a bit of flexibility, so if we do have other pieces of equipment, there is some that, maybe that isn't in this group. We have some flexibility to add that in there instead of, instead of cost.
Okay, does anybody have any questions about, about the fees, the fee structure, seeing the most, Counselor Hurd?
I have some concerns with, uh, our dump fees.
Yep.
And I have some concerns with even accepting non-residents. Like our res, we're contracted or whatever, but to accept non-residents' garbage or fees or, or not fees, but truckloads, I don't even think we should take any of that with, given, um, the troubles with the, with the dump or trying to get a new one, uh, trying to locate one, there's just so many hassles with that that I don't think we should be taking anybody else's garbage except for residents and the res, our contract. I don't know how anybody else feels about that, and, but the fees were, you know, there was a, some commercial halfway down, there was, um, hundred for residents and a hundred for non-residents, and none of that should be happening, but my preference would be not to take any, uh, res, non-resident garbage at all. I agree.
Is the, is the non-resident garbage that we're taking, is it, um, is it garbage from here? Like, that's, that contractor's working here or, or getting?
Um, not always.
It's who it is from the way?
Yeah, um, we don't, I mean, one way to mitigate that if we wanted to record it is, uh, a lot of other communities have like a dump card, so every property rule has a card.
Yep.
And so then that, you can control through by getting access with that card and the owners are on that property. Um, that's how you could probably mitigate that.
Yeah, I think we need to have some security on our dump.
We, we have.
We have discovered.
So we, we actually talked about that, um, I, about a year and a half ago, I think it was. So we, we, we talked about stickers, we got a quote for stickers and all this stuff, and it was like, then there was, like, how many stickers does the house still get? I know with our, our family, we have three vehicles, do they get three stickers? They have like how many? And then someone could drive their, like, there's all this kind of thing. So we kind of, we fell onto, um, the, that the attendant should be looking at people's licenses when they come because they always should have their driver's license with them and where do they live? It'll be on their license, right?
It should be.
Um, now, back when that happened too, we received an irate, um, letter from someone who has a camp in the area, doesn't live here, lives in Thunder Bay, has a camp in the area. And they were, they, for the last, for the last twenty years or something, she said, she had been going to that dump for free and been able to do whatever she wanted there for free and was very upset that we were charging, all of a sudden charging, it was, it was, it's not, it's pretty reasonable for like half a truck or lower or something. And, um, was threatening to like not go to our fence and not shop at the bar and shop anymore and all this kind of thing. Um, I think we, we responded sorry, but we, we are responsible for our town's features. This is our landfill that will eventually need to be replaced and we're trying to keep stuff out of it by doing recycling and everything. Anyways, um, so, long story short, this is like, um, camp, people that have camps will, will use it. And I understand that, that where else are, are they going to keep their garbage? The bear couldn't get to it, or they're going to use red rock or whatever, but at least we're charging now.
Well, I don't think we're picking any.
So, yeah.
And if we're charging, that's definitely not high enough.
Yeah. Well, I mean, especially at the, at the three-ton single axle rate being the same and the tandem triaxle, large trailer being the same, same value for local and non-local.
Hmm, do you want to? Yeah, we could treat that.
Like, if we're trying to cover, I believe the cottages, because the cottages in the area do put a lot of money into this community.
Yeah.
So, I mean, their rates should be a little bit more, I believe, than taking theirs, but some of this other stuff should be, to a point to weed them out from wanting to, just, you know, coming back from Terrace Bay driver and just dumping here and just continuing on, which is what, in some cases, what's happened, from what I've been told.
Counselor West, Counselor Westgaver?
I was also wondering if the, if the fees were checked for commercial garbage. I'm not too concerned about campers bringing their garbage here, but, uh, commercial, um, that was pointing out there, if, uh, they're coming from other towns and just to get cheaper rate, they're coming to our town. Uh, are the, those commercial trucks that might have all the, the truck with trailer bulk getting the same scale rate that they would in Thunder Bay?
Are you asking that, are, are comparable to fees, what are our fees compared to Thunder Bay? Is that what you're asking?
Yes, but not like, not for, uh, uh, regular users, but for the commercial use, like contractor coming there rather than going to Thunder Bay. Because I know, I know there's a lot of rules there with drain fluids, oil, gas, and, and if, well, here, I know somebody that was using that dump when they had a contract at the Terrace Bay mill, this is years ago, but they always used our dump because they could just put everything in one pile and not, not have to pay big fees.
Their fee structure would be pretty, would be different to ours. In some cases, they have weight scales, we don't, we don't have weight scales.
But are they, are we trying, trying to at least keep up? We don't need scales, but
Yeah.
we, we shouldn't be charging, uh, we should be charging a lot more for commercial, like contractors.
Again, I would say when, when all of this is a year and a half or whatever ago, our rates were way, uh, whack.
Yeah.
And the reason for a lot of this stuff was to bring them back into, like, quote, normality, even based on Red Rock numbers. Hers were sometimes a quarter of what theirs were for the same type of service. So, I mean, especially when you went in hazardous waste and stuff like that, we were charging nothing almost. Whereas there's special handling and monitoring involved there, and that's what came out of that. So I'm like, are these numbers based on some of that stuff, or are these numbers based on something else?
These, these haven't changed. We didn't change the, the fees from last year.
From, they're the same as last year.
They're the same, yeah.
How long have these fees been? Last year.
Since last year, yeah.
They were changed. Yeah, as I was saying, we, 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 um, when Shane was here, we jacked them up quite a bit to, so they would be on par with other, other communities, and at some points, there was no charge for something. So we, we brought that in as well.
Yeah.
Um, yeah.
I think it's, it's good that we're, uh, you know, looking at the fees, but I believe we should really, really consider not taking non-resident's garbage. Because trying to get a new dump or expand ours or whatever is major, major stuff. You know, there's been examples here of Mericon trying for years, trying to find a dump, and I'm sure there's other where it's too small. I don't think, like, and they were way too cheap. There's examples of Thunder Bay paying somebody to come down here and dump their garbage rather than pay the fees in Thunder Bay.
Yeah, but that was, that was before we raised.
No, but even either fifty dollars for a cubic yard of, uh, asbestos. I don't know what's going on, but that seems like a real deal to me. You know, because that's hazardous waste, right?
Yeah.
And so I don't know, maybe we should review these again with, um, with, in mind, with what Thunder Bay is charging or something, or just what other communities are charging. Because I feel pretty strongly about the dump and filling it up too fast. I've been there a couple of times lately, just, and I was just blown away at how high it is now and it needs pushing today, and the hole's given up pretty fast. I'm not really sure about our whole area there, but I think we really need to consider non-resident's garbage as in not taking it and then review the fees. Now, I don't know, I just don't want to give away our services and, and we need to be, uh, competitive, but we also need to be realistic and cover our costs. And it is an asset, and if we make a little bit of profit on it, that, you know, it's not necessarily a bad thing. Anyways, see what your thoughts are on that.
So just, just, um, for my thoughts, for, for, um, not taking, um, non-residential, I understand what you're saying, absolutely. Um, the problem you can kind of run into sometimes always is that if there's nowhere for people to bring their garbage, they'll just toss it in the bush or on the side of the road or something like that. So that, that can be an issue too, sometimes. Um, I would hope that people that own camps would be intelligent enough not to do that. But, um, yeah, I don't know if there's other communities that don't take outside garbage at all, if that's like a, something that's done or not. Um, but again, we have to, yeah, just consider, consider all, all sides of it when we're, when we're looking at it. And maybe we just charge a little extra more than, than what we're charging for, uh, non-residents. When, when do we have to have this passed?
So you could do two things, um, we have to give notice, so that would be for the next meeting to pass it. You could do, you could do two things where pass it as it is with the other changes and then come back and change this again. So do two bylaw revisions over, let's say, a month or two. Um, or we could just postpone it and then, um, and then wait, and we'll get a report to council next meeting with fees revised specifically for the landfill if there's no other concerns.
Are there any, are there any other concerns for the rest of the, the changes? For the rest of the fees? Counselor Westgaver?
Well, I'm still concerned with these commercials, uh, triaxos and stuff.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, by talking about other than the landfill, because there's other fee, fee changes in here, like for the campgrounds and all that stuff. So what, what, what I'm asking is, I, I know you guys have an issue with the landfill beach, uh, purchase, but is there anything else? Yeah.
We're going to review that because that, I agree with regular, anyways, no.
Because what I'm saying is if there's, there's no other issues with anything else in, in this, what I would suggest is we pass it as it is, so that the other fees, so we can start charging more for the electricity, because we, yeah, because if we don't, if we don't pass it now, it's not gonna, we're not gonna be able to charge extra for the electricity when people start camping here and they ask for camping fees and everything, because this is all one, one of my lot. So what Lars is saying is if we, and he approved this now, but make a, make a note or give him direction that we want to revisit the landfill fees, then he can, we can do that, um, but, the, the next meeting or we're going to wait for a report to do that. Um, so, is that okay with you guys? And that the other stuff can move ahead.
Yeah, the rest of it's fine, it's just that that's a big issue.
Yeah, yeah, and I, yeah, I hear you, I hear that for sure, so we can move to the next, uh, yeah. Where are the, Glenn?
Oh, sorry, Counselor Hurd?
Uh, so all the fees here, I do have, uh, with the water.
Oh.
And we're selling water, that seems dirt cheap to me also. I don't know who, who uses this service, I guess maybe somebody filling up a pool or something, or?
Or, uh, big water trucks for construction.
For construction or something, so, and that's, uh, that's potable water too, I guess, right?
There's a pressure for both.
I don't know, it just seems cheap to me again. You know, a twenty-five dollar minimum labor fee, like, you don't really hear a twenty-five dollar fee anymore, right? A fee is at least fifty bucks almost on anything.
Yeah.
So I don't know, I'd like to review that a little bit anyways, and then, except five dollars for a hundred gallons, that seems pretty cheap too. I'm not sure where the numbers come from, where we, they were just following along, or do these numbers?
We haven't, yeah, we haven't touched those.
Yeah, so, anyways, I, I'd like to look at those anyways, just to make sure that we're in reality here and not giving our stuff away.
Um, Counselor Hurd, you have your hand up.
Oh, I was just going to say, um, for the purpose of all of these, uh, different fees, is seventy-five, seniors is fifty-five? For all of them, like?
All for them.
Each, like, for, for showing, it just says senior. Um, some people have that sixty-five, and fifty-five, and sixty.
I'll confirm that, yeah.
So, Lars, if, if there's an issue with, um, water fees and an issue with, um, the tipping fees, can we approve this as it, as it is and then revisit those two fees without the refile?
We still have to do the notice, so we can't pass it until probably next meeting anyways.
Okay.
So if you wanted to wait, I guess the next option would be probably June eleventh, at least becoming to effect, if you wanted to wait, assuming you would get a full, you would make a full pass of the, the first round of drafts, new changes.
Yeah.
So, um, up to you, like we, so in this scenario, we would have, um, every, every other fee approved for May twenty-seventh, and then the next round would probably be June yet, early, early June.
Which is when our campsite will be open and all that kind of thing. So, we would want to get any changes, like, um, you know, preferably set at the next council meeting, you're saying?
For the marina.
For, for the marina, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
So, um, so your recommendation is of the, like, we don't pass this right now and wait till the next, um, to, to make sure we work out with, with all the charges?
I have one suggestion.
Counselor Hurd?
Um, when we had, uh, town hall guy, they, they had all of the town owners association, all of the people who own properties on, on the lake nearby just got a key to the dump, so maybe we could get people, give a card, an ID card to people who own camps in the area, who own camps in the area, so that they could use the dump for their personal garbage. And if they could just have like an ID card or something saying, because obviously their, their ID is going to say they're in Thunder Bay or wherever that, they're on the driver's license, but maybe they could have an ID card that says that they own property in the. But they're still, but they're still like a non-residence, so they would, no, it, they wouldn't, it wouldn't do it, like, whether you're in Thunder Bay or whether you own a camp, you're still a non-resident, like, you're not a taxpayer of Nettigan.
Taxes for the camp.
No.
Oh.
Not, well, Lothwest, I think they do, right?
Yeah.
But if, if it's not at Lothwest, it's, and then they, they'd have a driver's license that says Lothwest if they live there, right?
If they live there, yeah.
Yeah. So that non-resident is Thunder Bay, it's Polly Lake, it's anyone who's not paying taxes is a non-resident. Yeah, right?
Yeah, because I agree, like, like you said, sometimes they might just, we used to see an awful lot of garbage, just on the, on the, if you go to the Red Rock dump, you'll see garbage, you'll, you see garbage all the way on the road, on, on the way to the dump.
Yeah. Yeah, so there's that.
You just pull a name and have them charged.
Well, that's what they do, they go through the garbage and find a name.
Mm-hmm.
So there again, that's, that's the license that we, you know, show the license, you're a non-resident, you're not, uh, and it doesn't, again, it doesn't matter if you're, if it's a camp, um, unless it's Lothwest, which is your tax, you're taking taxes. Okay, so we will not, um, pass this at this point. We will, um, have, it's got to go back him and address the, the concerns that have been, um, brought up here by our council members. Do you have any questions about any of that of ours? Let me make sure, I guess, when you and Taylor are working on those and when Taylor's working on them.
I, I guess, Mary, the clarification is that if we're okay with kind of two, uh, two amendments to the bylaw, if that's fine.
Yeah, I think that's okay, yeah.
Two amendments to the bylaw. Okay, um, so I guess what we'll do, oh, is there anything else in, that we have to? Anything else in your report there that we need to?
Uh, just, uh, number two, which would be the, uh, the proposed building permit fees, uh, so statute of review of this as well. Um, so, uh, after chatting with myself and, uh, Taylor, we were just reviewing kind of comparatively to what other communities do, and the recommendation would go from a, like, instead of a, currently the fee structure is eight dollars per one thousand in a building with a minimum of fifty dollars, um, so just kind of go towards a more, um, cost, we're set, or non, but it's not impacted by cost, more based on square footage and the size and the type, because that's really more how that's going to impact your actual building permit, any inspections. So to switch over from that, so then there's a set amount of fees. Because that's really more how that's gonna impact your actual building permit, any inspections, so to switch over from that, so then there's a set amount of fees up to a certain amount of square footage for each set of. Group Cs, so all of these groups are based on the Ontario Building Code Act and what the type of the building is. And so the minimum would be moved from fifty to seventy dollars, and then if there's a current renewal, there would be fifty percent of that on top of the original cost, which would be after three years of. Um, if they don't build or finish within that. Um, overall, though, the, we did a few scenarios with recent building permits that we've gone in, the residential building permits are are more affordable, which I think is is kind of the desire of trying to support housing. While still recovering our cost, which is intent.
Does anyone have any questions about that? No, I think that's a really good idea, and uh. Like you said, it it could be part of our development plan that we, you know, we have this, it's more affordable for building permits, which is housing. I mean, the cost of going is so insane that this is a small drop in the bucket, but it's a drop that we can provide on our part, so. I think it makes us. Okay, so. Um, let's see, so we'll take out. Except the draft amendment, building permit fees, okay, so what we'll do is um. We'll approve um the the report and then just with the the second. Um, recommendation. Okay, would like to move with this, Counselor Harper, second Counselor Westover. Okay. So Resolution twenty twenty-five dash one one eight, moved by Counselor Harper, second by Counselor Westover. Be it resolved that this council receives staff report twenty twenty-five dash zero five dash thirteen dash oh two for information. And accepts the draft and then building permit fees as presented, with the final bylaw to be brought to the May twenty-seventh regular reading. For final approval after notice is provided in local media outlets. All in favor? Opposed and carried. Okay, next. We have the bylaw. Um, to set tax rate reductions for prescribed property subclasses for twenty twenty-five. Any questions on that one? No, and all these are covered in this one resolution, so I'll go to that one. Bylaws to set and levy the rates of taxation for twenty twenty-five. Actually happening, and good job to Lars and and his team there for um getting the budget. To this point, so early, it's mid-May, I don't think that's ever happened, actually, in in my memory, so good job on that. And the bylaw respecting the collection of taxes for twenty twenty-five, so all three of those. Um, would like to move this one? Counselor Harper? Seconder? Oh, she gotcha, Counselor Cartwright. Okay, Resolution twenty twenty-five dash one one nine, moved by Counselor Harper, second by Counselor Cartwright. Be it resolved that this council gives three readings and approves the following bylaws. Bylaw number one ninety-two, being a bylaw to set tax rate reductions for prescribed property subclasses for municipal purposes for the year twenty twenty-five. Bylaw number one ninety-three, being a bylaw to set and levy the rates of taxation for the year twenty twenty-five. And the formal adoption of the budget, bylaw number one ninety-four, being a bylaw respecting the collection of taxes for twenty twenty-five. All in favor? Opposed and carried. Okay, the next is my report from the NOAA conference. Um, I like to make sure that um. There is a report that comes from at least one of the, one of the attendees of of the conferences that we go to. Um, so I drew this one up, is it just for information? Um, and does anyone have any questions? I know um Counselor Hertz. Um, CEO Moffett and Counselor Westover did attend as well. They have anything to add? That's good. Very important. Counselor Westover?
Yeah, uh, my comment would be that it was very well done and well represented by all parties, but a chance to see. And I was really blown away with the young. Youth. Boss of buildings and hopefully we can move forward with that. Um, all in all, that was uh very well attended, I thought, and uh everything was. Panned out perfectly, the food was great and um. I wanted, I guess they're called uh.
Presenters?
The people that were having handing out all the gifts that. Presented.
A trade show.
It like, it was kind of like a trade.
Oh, trade show, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, the trade show portion was great. Um, and we well done to all of those people that helped on that.
Thank you very much. Um, on that note, the with council, um, I was gonna bring in any other business since you brought it up. Um, I have been following up at the high school and still waiting to hear back from them, I want to go in and talk to their civics class. Um, and also um. Association of the Municipalities of Ontario sends out news items and and things every now and again and resources. And they happen to have um a resource for engaging youth in in um today's. So I'm gonna look that over and maybe there'll be some activities or ideas or something. I was also invited to go and talk to the grade five sixes. At George O'Neill about about today, so maybe. I can get them excited about when they get to grade nine, they can come to me and you the counselor, so we'll see what happens there, but we're we're gonna, we're gonna try. And see what we can do. Okay, um, the next is the Thunder Bay District Municipal League Conference, which is gonna be held in Nipigon in the beginning of March, so we're hosting that. At the at the Legion, and so these are the dates that have been put out, and we have just been asked to. Um, okay, those dates, that uh that everything is is good with that, we don't have to pass a resolution or anything, just to make sure that we're we're good with that, that's a Thursday and a Friday. Um, and I'm just waiting to find out if the convention is available, but usually it is. That Friday is like the first Friday of um March is usually Ice Fest. But the. Two years ago, we had this in Nipigon. Uh, the conference ended, but like everything was cleaned up by two o'clock and the ice fest didn't come in until like six, so it worked, it was fine, it worked out. So is everybody okay with?
What's what's the dates, sir?
March fifth and sixth, they're Thursday and uh. Point is to be twenty twenty-six, actually.
Sorry.
That's okay, that's all right. Um, and now we have Brianna, who is our new economic development officer, who will be uh the one who's gonna be the staff lead on on helping to coordinate that, which is exciting. Okay, so we're good with those dates. I think, not that we know, it's before March, right? Okay, uh, next, seven days. Town of Coburg Resolution, Ontario Works Financial Assistance. And I think uh. So that's for, that's just for information then? Oh, there it is, I'm looking right at it. I saw like levy somewhere in there and I thought it was for another another increase in another levy, okay, all right, so um. Does anyone have any um? Questions about that or any comments about it? Do we have a mover? In that resolution? And we were? Forgotten already, but it's not as long ago.
Basically, the money coming in from Ontario Works at with uh inflation.
Yeah.
ODS. Moving on the rates for ODS here, okay.
ODSP got a raise in July, last July, I think, four percent, I think.
Okay, so we don't have a mover for this one to support it?
Yeah.
Yeah, Counselor Westover, and second, second is by uh. Counselor Harper. Okay, count uh Resolution twenty twenty-five dash one twenty. Moved by Counselor Westover, second by Counselor Harper, be it resolved at the council, the town of Nipigon supports the resolution from the town of Coburg to increase Ontario work rates. To match the ODSP rate increases with a copy of this resolution being forwarded to the Minister of Children, Community and Social Services. The Minister of Health, the Minister of Municipal Municipal Affairs and Housing, and the Association of Municipalities of Ontario and the town of Coburg. All in favor? Opposed and carried. Okay, next we have. Edarts Meeting Minutes, this is just for information. Um, and. Anne Marie, you're you're the representative on this one, so if anyone has any questions, Anne Marie is here. To answer. Um, does anyone have any questions? I just have a, I just have a comment, and I I'm a bit of a broken record about this one, but I I would really love to see more youth programming at the Edarts. The the building was renovated um. Because of a of a uh a study or report that was done on for youth arts in 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 our uh region here. And that was one of the um, that was one of the um implementation points was to create a space for youth for arts. And that's what uh Edarts became, so that's why it became what it is, but. That being said, I know there's lots of funding for seniors as opposed to for youth. Um, but we don't don't necessarily need funding to have those youth programs, what we need is is people coming out and willing to. Um, teach things and share things, I know in the past we've had cookie decorating, we've had cupcake decorating, we've had cooking classes. Um, we've had makeup application classes that were pretty popular. Um, there's there's a number of different things that we we could. Um, offer, I think, that we could try to anyways. Um, yeah, so if if we can sort of try to also focus on on youth, youth, and I'm talking about like tweens. I know it's hard to get teenagers, but tweens and teenagers, um, that would be really fantastic. Um, and if anyone has any ideas, any ideas about that. Um, maybe bring them forward to Anne Marie so that she can bring them to the to the committee, but other than that, everything's looking great and um. Bernadette's doing a really great job coordinating uh coordinating all the programming there. Next, we have the library minutes, again, this is just for information. Does anybody have any um? Any comments on that? Nipigon Museum Minutes, uh, from May sixth, twenty twenty-five. Museum, I think Gail, you're on that one, right?
Yes.
So if any uh, anyone has any questions for Gail.
Long one.
Yeah, lots lots of stuff covered. Just going through here, so it looks like uh. Um, Bernadette, who's also our Edarts coordinator, is wanting to work part-time as a curator here as well, which is fantastic. It gives her more hours and um gives us a curator, cause it's hard to find somebody for, I know that Edarts position needs to be ten hours. And it's really hard to find someone for ten hours, and we bumped that up to twenty, but again, it's a part-time job, so. Um, we can give someone full-time work with all the benefits that that comes with. And get a curator, which we've been trying to recruit for a couple of years now for Betty, so. Hang in there, even though she's retired. So that's one, that's a really great solution, thanks for that, Lars, it's it's wonderful. Any other comments? Good to see some of the action is getting completed as well.
Uh, I just have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, I know we had one student interested in uh working for the summer, just wondering all that, if we're overall getting students to make. A lot of applications or we're on a shortage or?
They, it was slow at first.
Yeah.
Um, recently we got the full, we should have two people to museum.
Oh.
Uh, we did get funding through two separate funding models this year for students. Um, actually through three funding models this year, they've all fully covered, so um, that's that's been good.
Yeah. Yeah, my concern was having male or female sit in there in the evenings by themselves, generally, that's not good.
Okay, anything else, Lars? Okay, and we're on to any other business. So I will start to my right and ask Counselor Harper, do you have any other business?
Nothing at the moment.
Okay, Counselor Westover? Counselor Cartwright? Counselor Harper? Staff, do you have any anything to bring up? Um, I just have a couple of things, um. I love the new sign on the Public Works Building, the yard there, and I live down there and I walk by there a lot and it's uh. It's always bothered me that it's been sort of hanging off there and it needed some work, and then when I saw it completely ripped off, I thought, yes, they're gonna put a new sign up. So great job on that. Um, I did receive um, just a a casual um. Word from somebody who lives near the dump, um, he he just asked me to remind people if this could go on the paper too, um. And maybe online to strap their loads down when they're going to the the dump landfill. Because things are flying off and and the individual lives close to that that area and. Um, his his property has become a a dump basically, so please make sure you strap your load down when you're going to the landfill. Um, I wanna say that the mayor's cleanup day was today, and it went really, really well, um, kids were super excited about it. And I saw uh staff um got into it as well and cleaned up around uh the office here outside, so. Uh, went really well, so I'm gonna thank everybody's involved, and I've I've seen posts the last week of people getting out and cleaning out the garbage. Um, like Owen Littlefield, I know, I saw him up there, you saw the Rotary and the cadets were out there doing doing their part, so. The town's looking really wonderful, so great job um on everybody there. Um. I think that is it.
I just have one thing on that.
Yes, go ahead, Gail.
I'm just wondering if we have uh any push on uh in advertising for adopted highway where. Because it's not just in town and on streets, it's or up the dump road, it's it's all the way, all the way down. The the public highway of seventeen, so I just wondered if we could maybe try to get. I I wouldn't volunteer to clean up, it's getting bored with the Timmy's cups and everybody's garbage.
I know that the Rotary does it, like the Rotary was just doing the highway as as were the cadets from the Legion. I don't know if they do the whole corridor, but I can um.
Okay.
Ask Sue me about that, cause she's part of the Rotary.
Extra volunteers.
Yeah. Yeah, and also you can just pull your car over to the side and just be getting the garbage, you know, who counts. But I do know that uh also like the hotels, I know uh some of the property owners, the businesses, they do their own cleanup as well, and sometimes they don't get to it right away, but. They do that as well, so.
Yeah, it's just vicious this year.
Yeah, it's pretty nasty. Been so windy, I think that's part of the reason too.
I know that's something.
Oh, uh, go ahead, Counselor Harper.
Uh, on those lines as well with the uh Matt Axe and trying to do some other things. Maybe we could look at some, I actually will be putting in some beautification out there on the highway as well. As opposed to just down here, but work it out the highway as well, that would include the cleaning, potential of the places on a regular basis. Put in some flower beds or such. With the hotel owners' permission and stuff like that in agreement, that might be something worth flipping out.
We could be at the golf course.
Thank you. Well, speaking of golfers, I think I had a golfer, so this is opening up on Saturday, so that's great news.
It's gonna rain.
Yeah, starting tomorrow.
Dog waste, sorry, dog waste is another thing. Um, that's another reminder too, that um to please pick up after your pet. It's very apparent in the in the, when everything starts to melt, all of the um, and it. It's just so gross, I mean, I saw a big pile of dog poo like on the path around the bridge, right on, right on the pavement. So um, I reminded all the kids today when I spoke to them at the schools to please clean up after your pet. Because it's really gross, and I I made sure to point to all the big piles of poo as I was walking around with them, how gross it was, so. That's nasty, and um I did, I did um um speak to Lars um about. Getting some stations in town, like with some bags and everything, because I did, I was running through the lookout um last week and. I saw a person I didn't recognize, I assumed they're a traveler, and they had their dog, the dog took care of business, and she just walked back into the car, put the dog in. And I. I wanted to say something, but I didn't have a bag to give or anything like that, so I think maybe if we have a bag right there, bags, bags. With a sign that says, please clean up after your dog, and there's bags there, there's no excuse, so I can go, hey, clean up your. With a sign that says, please clean up after your dog, and there's bags there, there's no excuse, so I can go, hey, clean up your.
Yeah.
Dog, yeah.
Help, at least.
It'll help, I think, uh maybe there and at the community center, maybe at the marina too, but those are kind of areas where there's a lot of dog action, so. Dog action, um.
I have that clear.
Yeah. I think that's everything. Okay, so uh we are going to go into closed session at this point, so who's going to move this, the resolution? Councilor Cartwright, seconded by Councilor Westtaver. Um, so this is Resolution May, or sorry, uh twenty twenty-five dash one two one. Moved by Councilor Cartwright, seconded by Councilor, Councilor Westtaver. Be it resolved that this council now resolve into closed session at seven fifty PM. Under section two three nine of the Authority of the Municipal Act two thousand one to discuss labor relations or employee negotiations. A position, plan, procedure, criteria, instruction to be applied to the negotiation. Acquisition or disposition of land. All in favor? Opposed and carried. Okay, and we will come back into open session after we are done with the closed session, thank you. Uh, this is Resolution. Resolution twenty twenty-five dash one two two, moved by Councilor Harper, seconded by Councilor Cartwright. Be it resolved that this uh meeting, sorry, that this meeting resolves into open session at eight thirty-eight PM. All in favor? Opposed and carried. Okay, uh next, uh we have the resolution for the CO to proceed as directed, who would like to move that? Councilor Hart, seconded by Councilor uh Cartwright. Resolution twenty twenty-five dash one two three, moved by Councilor Hart, seconded by Councilor Cartwright. Be it resolved that the chief administrative officer is authorized to proceed as directed in the in-camera closed session, all in favor? Opposed and carried. Forgot to sign one of these, I definitely got that, I think, the other day, I don't know how that happened. Okay, uh the next is um the bylaw in regards to Palmazon as our chief building official. Who would like to move this one? Councilor Hart, seconded by Councilor Harper. Resolution twenty twenty-five dash one two four, moved by Councilor Hart, seconded by Councilor Harper. Be it resolved that this council gives three readings and approves bylaw number one ninety-five. Being a bylaw to appoint and enter into an agreement with Palmazon as Nipigon's chief building official, all in favor? Opposed and carried. Okay, this is where we uh. Confirm all the actions of our meetings held on in prior to May thirteenth, who would like to move this one? Councilor Hart, seconded by?
Giving great.
Councilor Cartwright?
Giving great.
Uh, Resolution twenty twenty-five dash one two five, moved by Councilor Hart, seconded by Councilor Cartwright. Be it resolved that this council gives three readings and approves bylaw number one ninety-six, being a bylaw to confirm the actions of the meeting held on in prior to May thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, all in favor? Opposed and carried. And this is to close, uh resolution, or sorry, move by, who would like to move this one? Councilor Hart? And Councilor Westtaver? All right, Resolution twenty twenty-five dash one two six, moved by Councilor Hart, seconded by Councilor West, Westtaver, let this council meeting. Uh adjourn at eight forty PM. To meet on May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five for the next regular meeting or at the twelve mirror, all in favor? Opposed and carried. Thank you, everybody, oh, that was a.
Yeah.
That was a a long one, but a good one, lots of good, great things.